I'll call this meeting to order. This is the City Council, City of Kingman, meeting Tuesday, July 16th. If we could please have a roll call. Clerk Meredith.
Mayor Watkins.
Yeah, there.
Mayor Watkins is joining us via Zoom this evening. Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Eric.
Present.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker is excused this evening. Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. If you will please stand and participate in the invocation given by Pastor Michael Bell with the Kingman Nazarene Church and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor Savage.
Let us pray. Blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ. Almighty God, we give thanks and praise to you this day for all of your mighty works. You are loving, good, and gracious to us. Thank you for creating and sustaining us throughout our lives. We thank you, Lord, for this council and the work that they do. We pray that your wisdom and guidance be given to them this day as they seek to further the operation of this city. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. In the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, I pray, amen.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now go to a call to the public. Comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. We have a few call to the public. First, if I could have David Shury come up to the podium, please.
Shirey.
Shirey, thank you for correcting me. Could you state your name again for the public? Thank you.
What?
Could you state your name again for the public?
David Shirey. I'm owner of Shirey's Mill Antiques on Beale Street.
All right, you have two minutes.
Okay. It's about the first Fridays and closing Beale Street down to accommodate the street vendors. But that also shuts off the businesses that are open on that street. So, and besides the closing of the street and making it hard to park down there, people can't get to our stores or other stores. So, and also, when I park there in front of my business and my tenant parks in front of their business, they're told they have to be out of there by noon. And then we get special permission from one of our local people to be there till five. And they want us to park on a side street. Well, my tenant that's renting a space building there, he's a handicap and he can't walk from here to you hardly. And I have a problem. I'm disabled also, and I'm not going to walk from another street to my shop. And you know, Sarah, she gave us permission to park there last time, but she won't do it again because she gave us permission to park in front of our own stores. Think about that. So, my tenant is not going to, he's not going to drive or park on another street and walk to his business. He's going to not be open that day. And I think I should be able to park in front of my own store. And personally, I don't think they have the street, should have the street closed down to accommodate street vendors. They're not the ones that are paying the taxes on those buildings. They're out there, they're paying probably a fee to take up a space on the street. I don't know where that money goes, or you know, don't care. But I don't like having, not be able to park on my, in my street in front of my shop. And I don't like the idea of that street being closed, you know. One, I think one store on that street has, they set up on the sidewalk for first Friday. So, you can move, if you want to have a street closed, move it from up to Third Street and close it down the road, but not on our street. So, parking on my street, I might park on my street. And you know, it's my business, I'm going to park there. So, that's what I think.
All right.
Somebody, whoever thought about that, you know, thought of the idea of having Fridays, first Fridays, closed Beale Street. I don't think that they were thinking too hard about that. You know, the street vendors have no priority over the people that live there. And I have tenants in my building with a toddler, and they were told they had to park a block away.
All right. I hate, I hate to cut you off, but your two minutes is up. We have your contact information, and Miss Manager Walsh will be in touch with you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you very much. Mike Goodwin.
Good evening, Vice Mayor.
Good evening.
Council.
Could you state your name?
City Manager.
Could you state your name for the public, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you state your name for the public?
Oh, I'm sorry. Michael Goodwin, 470 El Rancho here in Kingman. I'm here once again to bring attention to the council about our road maintenance. I was told one of many times coming in here that we were going to get a blade ran down our dirt road at least every eight weeks. It's a mess. It's washboard. We've had the workers out there just the other day looking it over and, you know, they, they don't know when it's going to be done. I went to, down to the road department, spoke to, I believe his name is TC or CT, I think he's under Jack, over the phone, and he said I was on a rotating as the graders come through. Okay, that's, that's fine. This week is the second week where he told me they would come. You know, it's, I get it's Tuesday, still may happen. The last time we had a grader down there was in January 12th, okay? The blade on a grader is 12 feet wide. I stopped the grader and asked him, how many times you going to go over the road? He was told to go over it twice. Well, the road is 24 feet, so that means up once and down once, which does absolutely nothing. The whole management of this thing is not going well. I would just like to see our roads get to where they're not quite so dangerous and, again, just seeking to have our road brought up to city standards. Somebody really needs to look into this, whether it's Millings brought down there. We're not asking for much for, for the, you know, the people on El Rancho. It really needs to be done. I have had a, I've started a petition again. I did one, it's been a couple of years now. There's no record of it anywhere within City Hall. Okay, well, I guess things get overlooked, but I'm doing it again. I'm going to keep coming back. I will start bringing the people of El Rancho. They're, I'm just the one really that is the face of it right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Goodwin. We do have your contact information, and Manager Walsh is making note of it. Thank you. Brian Zimmerman. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Brian Zimmerman.
Thank you.
Mayor in abstention, Vice Mayor, council members, city officials. In 1967, Walter Cronkite declared Chattanooga, Tennessee, the dirtiest city in America. The downtown was indeed dirty and abandoned, but that galvanized the city into developing a plan of revitalization. It would require time, determination, and money, but the first project was building one of the largest freshwater aquariums in the country, right in the downtown. When finished, it began to attract tourists that eventually attracted investment in shops, restaurants, galleries, bars, and entertainment. The downtown fully recovered after some time. Over the last dozen years, historic downtown Kingman has slowly opened some shops, restaurants, galleries, bars, and entertainment, a good head start on growth. But we have not yet capitalized on the electric vehicle museum with its large and unique collection of vehicles spanning more than 100 years of innovation, but a companion to Route 66. There have been important moves, such as the acquisition of 519 East Beale Street. This site, in combination with the Powerhouse Visitor Center, bookends the downtown area where visitors can park at either end and walk between them, including the narrated walking tour provided by Main Street. It also frees up space at the powerhouse for temporary traveling exhibits or new full-time exhibits. It is time to aggressively pursue funding in every way to get the museum open and give tourists another enticing reason to exit the impending West Kingman interchange bypass and visit historic downtown Kingman in the upcoming Route 66 Centennial and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. All right, that's all we have for call to the public. Before we go to the consent agenda, I would like to move item 4B up. And here, item 4B. Does council have any objection to that? No? Okay. All right, hearing none. We'll move 4B up. Authorization to enter into a contract with Nexus Consulting LLC. City of Kingman staff identified the need to enter into an agreement with a federal lobbying group, Nexus Consulting, to assist with the airport industrial park land release through congressional actions and to pursue other federal funding sources to fund large-scale city capital improvement projects. The total annual cost is not to exceed $96,000 and will be funded between the airport, general, and water operating funds. Staff recommends approval. Hello. How are you, Doug?
I'm doing well, Vice Mayor, council members, mayor. Give you a little bit of background on this. We're doing some research of what has recently happened down in Buckeye. They managed to have 940 acres of arid nautical land released. It's a little bit different from ours, but in ways it is kind of similar. So, we ended up reaching out to the city of Buckeye, actually their airport, and their airport has linked us into Nexus Group. We've had discussions with Nexus Group regarding their role in lobbying and finding a way for that city to have the 940 acres released. And at the same time, we have discovered other projects through other cities throughout Arizona where they have managed to find additional and lobby for additional federal funds to complete large-scale projects the cities could not fund on their own. We've reached out to other municipalities on the background, and all other municipalities have just been very happy with working with them, have renewed their contracts, and have been very supportive of them. So, with that being said, we first engaged them regarding the land release, and then from there, we discovered these other projects that they could probably provide assistance with us funding. So, that's why when you look in there, you see it's more than just the airport. We're looking at pursuing them with streets, water, and other large projects.
All right, thank you.
And ma'am, sorry, just for the record, we do have Bob Holmes and Anna Ma. They're both the partners of the project of Nexus Consulting. If you have any questions or any, any concerns or just what they do, they are on Zoom call for you.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions? Comments? Yes, Counsel Savage.
Going into this agreement, and it will go through the federal level, getting that, is it going to speed things up on getting the land released from the FAA?
Um, it, we're not 100% sure yet. It could, it could not. It's going to be a very long and complicated process. It's already very long and complicated process, and we're just finding other avenues should we need to find if this will be a faster route and we could pursue it.
Vice Mayor Samley, if I may weigh in on that a little bit, too. Councilmember Savage, as you know, we've been pursuing this, this land release for quite some time now, and it seems that we continue to run into roadblocks and run into brick walls. One of the reasons that we've, we've looked to Nexus Consulting is to help us overcome those, those roadblocks. They, they've been through this process a number of times, most recently with Buckeye. They are situated in DC, so they have those contacts in DC and know which lawmakers, which, which people to speak with. They have that experience where, you know, obviously, here in Kingman, we haven't been through this process in quite some time since that initial land release that we received. So, the intent with this is to hire some experts that have been through the process, know which buttons to push, which, which routes to take, and to help guide us through this process. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm good with that.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve item 4B.
I'll motion approve item 4B.
I'll second. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, moving back to the consent agenda. We do want to thank our guests. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. Moving back to our consent agenda, all matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda. Excuse me. Clerk Meredith. We did have somebody signed up to speak, I believe, on item 4B.
4H.
Christopher Towne. Oh, 4, 4H, okay, excuse me.
Or I mean 2H. It's in the list.
No, I do.
It's 2H.
We do have 2H, but we also have 4B. I apologize, Mr. Towne.
Yes.
We can hear your comments, however, you know how we've already voted.
Okay.
I appreciate that, though.
I do want to make comments about it. We have been doing it for a long time, decades. We want to develop that area, that airport municipality. With Interstate 11 coming through, I just want to suggest that it would be in our interest to work with our representatives here rather than to outsource it to a federal lobbyist group, think tank. That way, our cultural heritage, our history, the people who live here can have more access to developing this area before other interstate businesses come to establish themselves along this highway. Be more true to our character, more private small businesses would be beneficial. I just wanted to state that.
Okay, thank you. Duly noted.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. All right, now we will go to the consent agenda. My apologies. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does anyone wish to pull any items from the consent agenda?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Okay, Counsel, Counsel Savage is pulling item I. I would like to pull item H. Anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve items A through G and J through L.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, well, we will start with item 2H. I did pull this because we do have a comment from the public. Authors, let's see. Authorization to award contract for mobile geolocation intelligence data tracking services. Consideration and approval for the Placer AI contract for mobile geolocation intelligence data tracking services. Placer AI is a successful bidder of the city's RFP ECD 24-001 Mobile Geolocation Intelligence Data Tracking Services. The contract term is for one year with four-year optional renewal periods totaling five years. Mobile geolocation intelligence data tracking services is a budgeted item for fiscal year 2425. The total for the five years of service is $101,536. Staff recommends approval. All right.
Thank you again. Thank you. My name's Christopher Towne. I just want to speak on this one as well because I'm more old-fashioned. I think that if a corporation wants to analyze my behavior and my buying, purchasing decisions, my interactions in their businesses with other businesses, I mean, that's, that's moving technology forward, but I don't think that they're going to be involved in their communities. Their, their management is being outsourced to, to these giant fusion centers, these giant think tanks. I think we should reject this because if I can't have a conversation with you and I'm just a, I'm just a piece of paper, I'm just a demographic, I'm just my, my purchasing power, I don't agree with that. They should, they should come here and meet these people, not just analyze giant, giant amount of data. It's getting out of control. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Towne. I'd like to call up Josh Noble. Could you, could you just tell us a little bit about this program? What we currently use the data for, how they compile it and such?
Certainly, Vice Mayor, members of council. We use this data to help us in multiple different ways, but let me go back to what the data represents and, you know, how it's collected, how it's used. This is data from an aggregate collection of people that come through Kingman. It's, it doesn't identify any individuals. We can't zero in and see who's, you know, who's being identified, who's going to what locations. In fact, if there's too low amount of cellular mobile devices that are calculated in a certain area that we're looking at, it won't give us anything. So, it's got to have a certain number to protect that privacy. And then it doesn't even collect all of the mobile devices that come through. They have a proprietary list of different apps that they collect data from, and it depends on if your location services is on with that app as to whether that data is going to be collected. We use the data for evaluating who's, where people that are coming to our events are coming to our events from, what sort of business people are loyal to. So, when we're working with maybe a realtor or we're working with someone that's looking at opening a certain sort of business and they want to see, do we have people that come through that shop at a certain sort of business or a certain franchise? And we don't have that in Kingman, so we can help them identify what areas those people are going to that maybe frequent that sort of thing in other communities, our travelers that are, you know, or even residents, maybe that shop outside of town. We have leakage, so this can help us identify what areas would be a good location for them to come in and what sort of businesses might be a good fit for Kingman that we don't currently have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I hope that helps. All right, with that, council, I'll entertain a motion to approve item H. If so, moved.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve item H. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I waited this time. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Item I, approval to modify the interactive murals program boundary. This item, this is agenda item seeks approval to expand the boundary of the interactive murals program. Some downtown businesses outside the current program boundary have expressed interest in participating but were unable to apply due to location. The economic development team has reviewed and revised the existing boundaries, allowing more downtown businesses to be eligible for the program. Staff recommends approval. Counsel Savage?
Sylvia.
Oh.
This has been pretty successful for downtown, definitely. Can you explain to the public where the extra boundaries are going to be available for businesses, please?
Sure. Good evening. Thank you for the question. So, we're going to extend it over to, well, let me start where it exists now. There's some portions of Andy and some portions of Beale that the current program is in, and then a couple of the side streets like Fourth, Fifth. So, we're going to expand it all the way up to First, and then I would include the frontage of Andy down to 10th. I actually did it reverse versus there, and 10th is that way. And then it's the same on Beale, and then a small portion of Oak, and then some of the number streets in between. And with that expansion, I just wanted to go ahead and say that it would be related to commercially zoned properties within those, on those guidelines that we have. There is a map also attached. I don't know if you were able to see that. Okay, it's there if you want to further reference of the exact boundaries.
Is the requirements going to be the same as previous businesses that did that?
Yes.
Can you explain that, please?
Yes, some of the requirements include that it could be a business owner or property owner of the commercially zoned property, and also a third party can request to do a mural. We've had those in pass like through Arizona at work or another organization that'd like to do that, as long as it's with the permission of the property owner. As well as, there's some guidelines in the program that has a theme right now is Arizona Heritage or something that goes along with the business, except for entitling the business because then it actually turns into a sign for the business, but otherwise it can be an image related to the business. This does go through a process. When the application is submitted, it's not immediately approved. There is people that review it and make sure that the guidelines are met, and it includes, Monica, we have a really great grants administrator that assists with that process also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Sylvia?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Sylvia. I'll entertain a motion to approve item H.
I'll make that motion.
I'll, excuse me, aye.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We have no old business this evening, so we have new business. Item A in new business, consideration and direction on the uses of opioid settlement monies. Nationwide settlements have been reached to resolve opioid litigation against multiple pharmaceutical distributors, pharmacy chains, and manufacturers totaling close to $45 billion. Of that amount, the state of Arizona and its political subdivisions are expected to receive about $1.14 billion in settlement distribution over a period of 18 years. These funds are restricted to be used on opioid abatement strategies, including areas of treatment, prevention, training, leadership, collaboration, and research. To date, the city of Kingman has received about $500,000. Future settlement distributions are expected to range from $47,000 to $187,000 annually through fiscal year 2039. Staff has prepared for the council's consideration a list of proposed uses for these monies, which meet the opioid abatement strategy. Staff recommends approval. Good evening, Ms. Malin.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. So, prior to 2021, many of the So prior to 2021, many of the states and their local jurisdictions filed lawsuits against a whole group of pharmaceutical companies relating to opioid use. In 2021, there were settlement agreements that were entered into with some of those companies. And since then, there have been a few more that have entered into those settlement agreements. Tonight, you approved one of those. Some of those companies are big name companies like Johnson &amp; Johnson and McKesson, Walmart, Walgreens, to name a few. So we've got these settlement agreements out there. What do they equate to? They are large dollar amounts. They vary in terms, they vary in conditions. So they range anywhere from 1.2 billion dollars in settlements all the way up to over 18 billion dollars in settlements. And the, basically, the payout range or the term of the agreements ranges anywhere from five years right now all the way up to 18 years. So as these settlement agreements were entered into, the state of Arizona entered into agreements with their local jurisdictions, I believe all of the counties and almost all of the municipalities, to basically serve as the administrator of all of those monies. So they collect 56% of those monies and they distribute the rest of those to the counties and the cities based on population. They also have to report on the uses of those monies, so they're going to serve as our compliance or reporting resource as well. So that's some background as far as how we got to be able to have these monies available. So ultimately, what is Kingman going to receive? Well, the agreements are very complex, complicated. They have base pays and incentive pays and all sorts of different terms. And so there is no real way to know exactly how much Kingman will ultimately receive. But if we were to receive every penny of every single settlement agreement that has been entered into thus far, we could receive up to 2.7 million dollars over the course of 18 years. Based on what we've collected so far, however, we know that it's going to be less because we've already collected less than we should have as far as a maximum amount's concerned. So we're looking at it thinking that we're going to collect about 1.9 to 2 million dollars. Of course, that'll be reevaluated and reassessed as time goes on. To date, as the Vice Mayor shared, we've collected just over 500,000 dollars in settlement monies. So can these settlement monies be spent on anything? Of course not. They, in the settlement agreements with the pharmaceutical companies, as well as in the agreement between the state of Arizona and all of its local jurisdictions, there are restricted uses, and they refer to them as opioid abatement strategies. And basically, those strategies cover three major categories: prevention, treatment, and recovery. And also, we can use them for research and training and for our first responders. And there are some subcategories under those broad categories, but in general, anything that falls under one of those major categories is what those monies can be used on. So it's going to be quite a bit of money over the course of 18 years. So we want to come up with a really great plan, right, to benefit the community, help some organizations across the community. And so as city staff got together and started looking at some of those uses, we touched base, the city clerk was a part of that, our police department, our court, and our fire department. And we have come up with some ideas for your consideration that touch quite a few of the areas. Prevention, so preventing the misuse of opioids. Training, leadership planning and coordination, so working with other community partners. And then ultimately, a large chunk of it, we're looking at recommending to you to give those monies through a grant program, some sort of formal solicitation, to the organizations in our community that are already doing the work of addressing this issue. So what does that look like? Well, when we look at the 18-year plan, we are looking at possibly a school motivational speaker. In talking with Chief Cooper and his team, he has said that we need to address this early, right? Educate our children early. And so we talked about maybe having an education, a motivational speaker come to our middle schools or elementary schools once a year, just a rotation, going around and speaking and sharing the story, right? And that is about 15,000 dollars. Our city clerk did some research and found that with travel expenses and with their speaking over a course of a few days, it would be about 15,000 dollars. And we would recommend to do that annually or until it was proven not to be beneficial any longer. We also have the Walk Away From Drugs program that we are partners in and support. And so we would want to continue to support that and maybe set aside 5,000 dollars annually for that particular program. And then in talking to the police department, they had shared, you know, it'd be really great to have some Narcan kits and stands in some of our public-facing lobbies and buildings so that if something were to happen, anyone can administer this, can administer Narcan. So the suggestion was to potentially fill our public-facing lobbies with some of that. About 2,000 dollars and then as needed, certainly not on a recurring basis. Our police department and fire department do attend trainings that are related to opioid use and how to address that. And so we would recommend using some of the monies for that training as well, 25,000 dollars every year. And then lastly, well, not lastly, the grant program, which we are looking at possibly 150,000 dollars, awarding that over a two-year period, so every two years through that 18 years. And I'll talk more about that on the next slide. And then we know that things come up and that we may not be able to identify every single year. And so setting aside some monies for council to give further direction, or if something comes up and staff sees a need for that, then we have some monies set aside every year for that as well. So just some general uses for your consideration. So what does that grant program look like? Well, I want to start by sharing that the, and I think I shared this at the last council meeting, that Mojave County did something similar to this on a much grander scale, but really looked at awarding the monies to organizations that, again, are already addressing these issues. And so we thought that that could be a good idea as well. Now, ours would be a much smaller scale, and we thought that instead of awarding these monies to one agency, we would want to award them to a variety of agencies. We have organizations like M-Step and the Jerry Ambrose Veterans Council that might ask for more money than maybe a program like Celebrate Recovery or Jacob's Ladder, something like that. So really opening it up to nonprofit organizations for them to provide their purpose, provide their program, share the partners or who they are going to benefit in our community with this program, how they're going to plan for it. And so evaluating their proposals based on that criteria and how much monies that they are requesting, and then ultimately, of course, bringing those to council for consideration. But before we move forward with any of this, what we found from Mojave County is that at the end of their RFP process or their formal solicitation process, and after they issued the awards, they held a stakeholder meeting with those that participated in the process. And one of the comments from the stakeholders was that, you know, it would have been nice to be able to participate in a process, giving input before the actual RFP or the formal solicitation was issued. So we would like to go ahead and do that too, so that we can address any sort of questions or concerns or some great ideas that might come out of that and incorporate that into the formal solicitation. Again, it would be a two-year grant cycle, so it would be 75, could be up to whoever, however, we want to work it as far as do we want to do 75,000 dollars per year? Do we want to do 150,000 dollars in total? So those are things that we'll get from the stakeholders. It is, we do require reporting. We are required to report to the state, so we would require reporting from those who received the monies. We would require quarterly reporting, and the monies would not be awarded upfront. So as monies are spent on the programs that were designated in the proposals from those organizations, they would ask us to reimburse them for a portion of those monies, and then we would reimburse them for those monies. That's what we're thinking of how that program would work. We are thinking of potentially limiting that grant program to just nonprofit organizations. But I know the county, I think, opened it up to just corporations, private corporations, as well as the schools and some other agencies. But again, they had quite a bit of money to use. So with that, that's, those are, I guess, some background on the monies, and then, of course, some options for your consideration. I will answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Maline. Councilor Savage?
Yeah, just real quick, Tina. With those being granted to us, is it possible to keep that money in an interest-bearing account so we can kind of expand on that a little bit?
So it is in an interest-bearing account, yep, absolutely, Councilman Savage.
All right, Councilor Eric, and then I'll go to you, Jamie.
Yeah, I had two quick questions. First one, I just want a clarification. It is up to the nonprofits to apply in early fall on their own behalf? And if they don't, then they're not in the program, correct?
They're not in the program for the first two-year cycle.
Okay, but they have to apply themselves.
Councilman Eric, that is correct. We would not be able to assist them with any of that. That is correct.
And my second question, some nonprofits have been burned in the past with, by spending first and then being reimbursed later. Is that a situation we need to worry about? Or are we able to guarantee them so that they can apply in confidence?
I missed that last comment, Councilman Eric.
Are we able to guarantee the dollar amount that they're going to receive, that we have it in our possession so that they can apply in confidence?
Councilman Eric, thank you for that question. Yes, absolutely. Once the awards are granted, once council approves the awards, it will be, they will be awarded a specific dollar amount that they will have set aside for their use as designated in their proposal.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilor Staley?
Thank you. I was excited to see that this was going to come to the council and we could start making a plan for how to spend these funds. But I was hoping to see something on here to address the lack of inpatient treatment centers in Kingman. And I'm wondering if it was discussed some type of a public-private partnership where the city could use these funds to purchase a building and then we partner with a provider that could come in and give services to people who are addicted, where they could get the inpatient treatment locally. I think that would have probably the greatest impact on the community in helping people actually get off of opioids. Was that a part of your conversations?
It was not part of our conversation, and it was, I would say, probably because of the cost of it. Every year we get, in the beginning, we get a couple of hundred thousand dollars a year, but over time, that goes down to 47,000 dollars a year. So to purchase a building and then staff it and help support operations, those monies end after a certain period of time, so that's...
What I was imagining is that we would not pay for the operation, but that we would come to some sort of agreement where we own the building and maybe we lease it at a discounted rate in order to entice a provider to come. And then obviously, through insurance, whether that's access or private insurance, the patients could then pay for their treatment. So that would be on the provider. And if we were able to either secure a building that's already, you know, already built, then get a loan and use that money to make the payments, or we apply for additional grant money, because I, in just a quick search of opioid grants, I right away found one that was over a billion dollars in funds that are available. And I know from M-Step meetings that those monies are out there. So if we identify this as a project, maybe we would only need a portion of this to purchase that building. But I think that's one of the things that has kept somebody else from coming in and providing that inpatient service is that, you know, you've got to have a building and you have to have all these other things, but we might be able to entice a provider if there was sort of that cherry on top with a discounted rate for a lease. I think you could just see a bigger impact on this problem, and it's something that we're lacking here.
Absolutely, it can be up for consideration. Absolutely, if that's the direction, we can definitely look into that. Thank you. You're welcome.
I was going to suggest there is a new treatment center that has opened up. It's called Revive. They are, they have beds, they are doing counseling. I was going to suggest that they be a part of the stakeholder process because I feel like that's their wheelhouse. They will know what they need, they will know the additional needs of what they're seeing in the community. So I would like Revive to be a part of that stakeholder group.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I had. Anybody else? No? All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So I'm looking for direction on to bring back, it sounds like, maybe some sort of option for an inpatient facility and then finding a provider to provide those. We would not pay for the operations, but maybe find a location for that. And then bring something else back to talk a little bit more about the grant program because that'll change a little bit of what this dynamic looks like. So we can certainly look into that.
And in addition to the direction, if that's what we end up doing, giving you direction to go in that route, I would want that, I would want Revive to be a part of the conversation.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you, would you like to make a motion?
Do you need a motion? Or you're just looking for direction? I think I've got it, thank you so much.
Perfect, thank you so much. All right, moving on to... Item 4C, acceptance of U.S. Department of Agricultural Grant Agreement. The city applied to the United States Department of Agricultural Rural Development, Business Development Grant, RBDG, to fund a feasibility study for an event center as well as fund an updated economic development strategic plan, and has been awarded 88,000 dollars with a 22,000 dollar match for a total project cost of 110,000. Staff is requesting council approve to accept and authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement, letter of conditions, letter of intent to meet conditions, request for obligation of funds, and any related documents pertaining to grant award. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you so much again, Vice Mayor and Council. I really only have a couple of comments to add to that. The summary covers exactly what this item is. I wanted to give kudos to the economic development team and our grants administrator. They completed a very thorough application, worked very closely with the state representative on this grant to ensure that we got this awarded. And then I also wanted to let the council know that if this does get approved this evening, that we will be able to move forward with procuring a consultant to perform that feasibility study on the event center, and then we'll ultimately bring that back to council once we get that report issued. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. All right, moving on to item 4D. Kingman Crossing Subdivision Development Agreement with Angle Homes. At their regularly scheduled meeting on April 2nd, 2024, the city council approved a motion to require design and construction of an 86-foot-wide arterial street section for Kingman Crossing Boulevard between Santa Rosa Drive and Airway Avenue, and to reimburse the developer 300,000 dollars to cover the increased cost from a standard collector street section to a standard arterial street section. A development agreement has been drafted to memorialize that approval. The agreement also includes requirements at the time of construction. Staff recommends approval. Mr. Gorman, welcome.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council Mayor. As you can recall, back at the April 4th meeting, city council approved the city participation for construction of Kingman Crossing Boulevard. We came up with a number of 300,000 dollars, which is basically the difference between the collector street and the arterial street. This agreement, or the participation requires a development agreement. The terms of the agreement that we came up with, the draft, basically says that the developer is allowed to develop three of the six phases east of Kingman Crossing Boulevard. At that point in time, they will need to construct Kingman Crossing Boulevard to the arterial section. Otherwise, there won't be any approving of future phases of Kingman Crossing Boulevard until they do so. Or Kingman Crossing... until they do so, or Kingman Crossing, the subdivision. Those three out of six phases are the equivalent of about sixty acres or about two hundred and eighty residential lots. The other terms are the, we're not requiring the developer to participate in the cost of the traffic signals on Airway or at the intersection of Santa Rosa and Kingman Crossing When we started negotiating and talking to the developer, they told us they prefer a more open-ended agreement and one that the construction of Kingman Crossing Boulevard would be market-driven based on what works best for them as far as the construction of the subdivision. Staff's main concerns with this are that once the traffic interchange is built, people will get off the interchange, they'll come to the intersection of Santa Rosa Drive and they can't, they won't be able to go straight through to Airway, they'll have to make a left turn and go around Santa Rosa Drive and then wait for the signal there to get to Airway. The other thing to point out is that the developers' traffic, traffic impact analysis assumes that Kingman Crossing Boulevard is built. There's no scenario in their analysis that shows the subdivision being in place without Kingman Crossing Boulevard. It also shows that the existing intersections at Prospector and at Airway in Santa Rosa, the existing condition, that those intersections are actually not working very well and they have a lower level of service. Like I said, there's no interim scenario that was analyzed where they build the subdivision and don't build Kingman Crossing Boulevard. Therefore, we can only assume that those intersections are basically going to get worse once the intersection, once the subdivision is built with access on the Airway. It's just going to make those intersections worse. So staff prefers that we have some sort of timeline placed in the agreement for when the developers required to build Kingman Crossing Boulevard. And I'll take any questions if you have any.
Before we have any questions, Manager Walsh, did you have anything to add?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to, I appreciate what Mike had to say and wanted to recognize too that this was a collaboration working with Angle Homes. Appreciate their time and working with us on this and coming together. I would say from a city perspective, is this the agreement that we had hoped for? No. I think, coming from an Angle Homes perspective, is it the agreement that they had hoped for? Probably not either, which I think helps speak to the agreement and that we were able to find that middle ground. Isn't exactly what either of us would prefer, but I think it addresses the main concerns that the city has and it does allow for some flexibility in allowing Angle Homes to continue with the development and be able to plan for that roadway through there. So I, again, I appreciate Angle Homes coming to the table and working with us on this as well.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions from council? I know we have the applicant here. Do we have any comments or want the applicant to come up? I only just had one question. We're installing traffic controls at two of those intersections. What's the cost of those?
That's a great question. Mike has that, but I can guarantee Jack probably can give us a number.
Three hundred and fifty thousand per signal.
And if I may, Vice Mayor, the reasoning for not requiring those as part of the development agreement and not putting that as a responsibility on Angle Homes is, looking at the traffic study, the need for those traffic signals is mentioned within the study, but the need is more a result of future traffic coming from the interchange and the improved retail center there. So that would be the driving force for the need for those traffic interchanges. The subdivision itself didn't quite rise to the level of requiring those interchange signals. So that was the reasoning behind, the justification for excluding those from the agreement.
I appreciate you clarifying that. So the, will the signals be put in after the paving is done concurrent with the interchange being completed?
The intent on those traffic interchange signals, or not the interchange signals, but the intersection signals would be based on traffic analysis as that area is built out and as that need rises, we would then install those signals as needed.
After a traffic study's been completed?
Exactly, as those are shown. And that would also offer opportunity for, as that retail's built out, looking at possible partnerships with those retail spaces that is, that are contributing to that traffic increase as well.
Okay, perfect. All right. Any other questions from council? No? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 4D.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt. I thought we were going to discuss something. I wasn't sure. Counselor Walker, and I think we both share the same opinion, we would like to maybe put in here in this that if Kingman Crossing is started and under completion, I mean, is started and being worked on, that we would like this road also to be completed. It's basically so that they end up at the same time because of the increased traffic that that intersection is going to cause on this whole area.
Manager Walsh?
So that's... Go ahead.
Mayor, thank you and I appreciate the sentiment and definitely that is one of the items that we had looked at and we discussed with Angle Homes as we began the negotiations for this agreement. Definitely, we would prefer to have that in as part of the interchange agreement or as part of the, as the interchange is constructed. Staff felt that placing that timeframe, and I'll speak to staff during the negotiations. If council has a different view, obviously, we'll yield to council's decision. But staff felt at the time of the negotiations that by allowing, by working more with what the demands of the subdivision would require, that that would be, I guess, a justifiable request of the applicant to build the road based on the demands of the subdivision itself. Timing-wise, ideally, yes, we would hope that it would be built prior to the interchange. There is the ability for traffic as it exits the interchange to turn left on Santa Rosa to make it over to Airway. You know, that's not our preferred layout, our preferred traffic flow, but that does have that option to allow for that until Angle Homes does get to the point of construction. And I will say that the agreement does not say that they must wait until all three phases are complete. It just says that no phase after those three phases could be constructed without completion. So if Angle Homes, you know, decided to construct the road prior to that, the agreement would allow for that as well.
I understand that flexibility, that part of it. And once again, our concern is that if Kingman Crossing is done and ready to open, we would like that road open and ready to go also. And they could be being built at the same time, you know, but, or at least it's open shortly thereafter Kingman Crossing is, just because, once again, of the added traffic that that, we hope that that all brings over there in that area.
Vice Mayor, if I may, it may be an opportunity if Angle Homes would like to speak to it as far as timing on the development, if they have an idea of when that would fit in as far as their schedule goes. That might help address that question as well.
Tyler, you want to come up, Tyler?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name's Tyler Engel, president of the Angle Homes and some of the related land developing companies involved here. As far as the timing of it, there's a report called the Change of Access Report, which ADOT's involved in. And the interchange went through, I think it was approved in 2017. And in that report, it says that Santa Rosa can act as the main arterial support and traffic for the interchange until such point that Kingman Crossing Boulevard does get built. So they analyzed it and the traffic engineers, when we did our report, analyzed it as well. And all of them have come to the conclusion that Santa Rosa can be the support until Kingman Crossing Boulevard gets built. We would love for it to be built at the same time if the interchange gets built, but we're not a government entity. We only build things when home sales can support it and funds it, basically. So if the interchange were to, you know, get fast-tracked and be built right away in the next couple of years, we wouldn't be ready. We couldn't just start this big million-dollar road and be tied to that. I'm not the commercial developer, I'm not the hospital or those people, so they need to be, I feel like, separated a little bit. We are different, it's different private property, and I don't think legally we can be made to do it if we don't want to do anything. We could just leave it cattle land, but that's not what we're in the business of doing. So the current development agreement as proposed, we're supportive of. We went back and forth with the staff quite a bit on and feel like it's pretty fair. We'd prefer to be allowed in the scenario where the interchange is never built, so only in that scenario where things are really slow on the home building side, interchange never goes in. In just that scenario, we would prefer to be able to wait to build that phase last. So it's eighty-two lots and the road to be built last because things are slow anyway and the interchange isn't in. And this agreement doesn't allow that. Like I said, we're okay that it doesn't if you don't want to allow that in that slow-paced scenario. But yeah, do you have any questions for me or does that help at all?
Mayor Watkins?
No, it's not what I want to see, but sometimes we have to choose to, we agree to disagree. So that's where we're going to stay. But I can see Tyler's point, I, you know...
I mean, if the city wants to fund it, I'll build it whenever you say you want to build it. The Kingman Crossing Boulevard, we can build it this year.
Well, like I said, I think it has a lot to do with, let's hope that Kingman Crossing does take off and that does go, and that's my concern. So as I said earlier. Okay? I have no more questions.
Any other questions? All right. I am going to abstain from voting because I noticed that the development agreement does name my company, so I'm going to, in full transparency, abstain from voting. So I, though, will entertain a motion. Yes, Counselor Eric?
Yeah, just for clarification, can I ask what an aye vote is and what a nay vote is? Like, the nay would change the agreement, correct?
A nay would decline the agreement.
Vice Mayor, at this point, no motion has been made. So until a motion is made, that will determine what an aye and a nay would mean.
Thank you. Manager Walsh, did you hear that? Counselor Eric?
Yes.
All right. I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the Kingman Crossing Subdivision Development Agreement with Angle Homes as written.
I will entertain a second.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. I will not be voting for the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. All right, department reports. Paving, maintenance, and improvements updates.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council, Mayor. Not usual that I get to come up that quickly when it comes to department reports. I'm usually three or four down, so I was back there loitering around, waiting for everybody else to report. So first off, I guess I should get my agenda up. And I might have to ask Annie's help, although I told her I could run this thing, but... All right. Oh, thank you, Aaron. All right. Thank you, guys. So update on pavement preservation. What I did touch or am going to give you guys is everything that we're doing, or have done, rather, for fiscal year '24 and then give you an update on what we're looking for coming into the current fiscal year of '25. So we had this year almost eleven million dollars budgeted and with the end of the cycle that we just completed this June, we've actually spent all of that. So waiting on invoices, but we know that everything was spent in that. We, and I'll show some slides on what we're up to. Residential two crack seal, we'd actually broke off of that a little early and that way we could go, one, we were facing higher temperatures with crack seals, more difficult, but we had broke the crews off to go into water patching because we had such a significant backlog and we weren't being able to keep up with what we had. So I'll show you what that looks like. Just some stats that we did complete this year. We did eight-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand pounds of crack seal rubber just in the residential districts that we did complete. So that was Districts 1, all but a small portion of District 2 and District 3, and I'll show you what those look like in a slide here shortly. Overall, with the residential districts and the crack seal between our crew and contract crews, we actually put down over a million pounds of crack seal. We treated over two million square feet of roadway and I was using different treatments, be it a full replacement, the cape seals we did, chip seal, whatever those were, which is actually roughly almost half of our network. So we're about four and a half million square yards, something like that. So this is the map showing the work that was completed for this year. I would like to point out the pink area right here in District 2, to the west side between like Kino and Airway, there's a portion of that pink district that still needs to be finished and as the temperatures decrease, we'll be back in there. So we actually just today received the proposal for the materials, so you'll see that on the next council meeting for approval with some other stuff that we have ready for you. The other thing that I would like to just point out, the green areas, if you look back in my presentations, were supposed to be a crack seal and a fog seal. We ended up needing some more crack seal rubber in a couple of areas and so we've got the crack seal done, but I'll be coming back to you guys with a change for the green roads to accommodate the fog seal that was going to be completed. That's just a maintenance treatment. It's not going to hurt us to sit on that. Just when we go out, just to get a little background, when we do our crack seal estimations, we'll take, say, a hundred-foot section of a road, we'll actually measure the cracks and come up with a quantity and then that's a representative sample thereof and then we estimate the tonnage or the poundage that we're going to need over a mile, five, 10 miles, whatever that ends up. So we estimated those, got into some heavier areas that were cracked up, and so we increased that to make sure we got those sealed up well before we laid down our chip seals and other treatments. So that's why we're going to need some additional crack seal. So we talked a little bit about the work we're looking at in fiscal '25. So initially, when we laid out the funding scenario with you guys last year, we were looking at doing a residential district per year and doing some additional analysis. When we ran that, we just ran it for the total miles of road and what it takes to maintain those. We didn't, the program we used for that actually won't let us separate one road from the other. Just, we drive it by a budget amount every year. And so we've done some additional analysis and we've been pushing on the residentials. That is our largest part of the network, makes up around seventy-five percent of the total mileage and square yardage for Kingman. And so what we're actually targeting is within three years to be through all the residentials. What that does is it sets us up so we can stop the deterioration and those roadways, again, making up the largest part of our network, will make a significant improvement in our overall condition ratings. And so what you're looking at here is Districts 2, 3, and 4, and we're working on a... a contract right now to put out to bid, and that would take care of the chip seal in these three districts this fiscal year. District Two, the pink one, is, like I say, almost completely crack sealed. The blue one, District Three, is fully done, and so we will complete District Four crack seal over the winter. And our plan right now to try and split these up, because that actually, it's a little over 100 miles of road, and so the goal would be to do, like, one and a half districts in the fall, get that cleaned up, taken care of, and then we'll do the remaining one and a half. One thing I meant to touch on first, in those funding scenarios as well, we were working with the county. The first year, they were able to do about half of the 25 miles that they thought they could. This year, they said they could take care of some, if we have high priority roads, they could help us on those, but they've been fighting with contracts and oil and their own timing, and so their chip seal's been delayed. And so right now, we're looking at bidding all three of these out. And then the following year, fiscal year '26, I didn't print a map of those, but fiscal year '26, we would complete Districts Five and Six, which is the area, foothills, Rancho, that's District Five, and then we move into the downtown area, which is District Six. And so again, by the end of next fiscal year, we'll have all the residentials treated with crack seal and chip seal, and, you know, anything that's remaining. I don't have anything to show you right now because I want to get this bid out and understand what I, know what I have left over, so then I can take what I do have planned for fiscal '25, what I can actually afford after those are done, and then get back to arterial collectors with the remainder. We made a lot of progress. If you go back to the map prior, the arterial collectors, we actually had a really good year this year with some of the treatments and the prices we got. We actually got a little further than we thought we would, even though we used more rubber and some materials that, than we had estimated in our estimates in the field. So we're really happy with that, and getting those next three districts done will set us in a good position, especially, as you guys know, our funding scenario was finite because it was based on us lowering the, or, let me say, the heavy funding scenario had a limited time because we were lowering that operating reserve to accomplish that. And so we're still going to have to look past, you know, five, six years and what that looks like, but getting these residential districts out early and then spending the last couple of years really driving in on the remainder of our arterials, which hopefully will be preventative maintenance because we've taken care of the rehabilitation already. And so I'm pretty excited to see these three districts come together in that. Talking water patches, you guys had asked that we provide some updates or stats on water patches. So right now, outstanding, we still have about 151 patches, and that's roughly 2,600 square feet. That's actually a proposal we just received again today. We had completed the two that we, one we brought to you and one was under the threshold for council approval need, but both of those were completed in June. Last fiscal year, between July 1 and June 30, 810 water patches were completed. That's roughly 18,000 square yards is what was completed in the field. 490 of those were completed by the Streets Division. When you're looking at the amount of tonnage that that equates to, I work in tons and square feet, I don't know if it means anything to anybody else, but we actually did roughly 400 tons of asphalt. And keep in mind, every bit of that is hand-placed when the crews are taking care of that, whether it's our crews or the contract crews, but our crews did complete in-house about 50% of those patches, a little over. The dollar amount between materials and contracting, the materials, those come out of water, the water fund, we buy the asphalt and the materials for the patching, the labor for in-house is from Streets, and then the contract price for patching when we bring in a contractor to do those, like we did with McCormick, that all comes from that water fund as well. And so we spent $550,000 last year in patching. And so with that, I know that was kind of short, but setting you up to see what we're doing, what we have done, and I'd like to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions for Jack? Counselor Staley?
The additional treatment that you did on streets like Western, the micro, what did you call it? What is it?
Microsurface.
Microsurface. How much more does that cost to go back and do that over the chip seal? Because that's a really nice surface, and those streets look brand-new.
Mm-hmm. I would love to do that, and so we had initially ran those in our budget scenarios. Right now, I think for a type-two slurry or microsurface, depending on where you're at and what you're doing, you're between $3 and $5 a square yard. And so when you times that, I should know the statistics off the top of my head, how many square yards we have in our residential. It is pretty significant.
Yeah.
What I would love to see, because what we pitched when we were doing, I don't want to say pitched, what we had evaluated and tried to achieve, but we didn't have the budget for, could not fund, was doing that scenario where we'd come in, chip seal, follow that up at a later time with a type-two slurry, and the chip seal seals the surface, takes care of cracks and things, and then the microsurface, as you see, nice, smooth, black surface. Improves your rideability, improves your aesthetic, everything. So I am kind of hoping if we continue to drive the way we are, we won't have enough funding to go through all the residentials, but we still have a funding hurdle to come over, looking out, you know, a number of years, is to be able to go back and do that. Because we need to get the roads that are in really poor condition, those residentials that are cracked and rutting and ravelling, we've got to get them sealed up, and then we could come back with that. But it is a really good product. That's really what we'd love to do, but, you know, the funding scenario right now does not support that.
Yeah. What is the cost just for the chip seal?
It varies. I think we were at $2.10 a square yard on the last one, if you include. It was a little different because we purchased the aggregate and the oil, and then we had the contractor just place it, and I want to say it put us at, like, $2.10 a square yard.
Okay. And so on these roads that are in really bad condition, they're almost failing, when you crack seal them, do the chip seal, and then the micro, does that get it back to being a non-failing road? It'll, it's basically like building a new street?
It's very close. Nothing beats brand-new asphalt, but it is very close. We seal it, we, as long as we don't have base failures, right? If we got poor support under the road, doesn't matter what you put on top of it. But if you have a road that's cracked, raveled, you've got some oxidation going on, and we do crack seal it and we chip seal it, we've sealed the road, we've taken care of the macrotexture, and we can come back over and put that. It doesn't extend your life cycle as well as it would brand-new asphalt, but it gets really close. And when you're looking at that cost, you know, say we paid, just, let's use the high end, say we paid $3 for a square yard of chip seal, and again, I'm using high numbers, but say it was $3 and $5 for the microsurface, $8 a square yard is still much less than the 20 to 25 that we pay for asphalt for just a remove and replace. So your life cycle comes very close to the asphalt. It is a good product, but again, when you figure the largest area of our network is residentials, it adds up pretty quickly. It's something I'd love to do, and, you know, if we can beat, continue doing what we are right now and, you know, exceeding what we were thinking we would be able to do as far as the network improvement and the amount of roadway, we may, and I say "may," have enough at the end to come back and start doing portions of neighborhoods. Ultimately, it'd be great, we've done the chip seal, we can come back, we can crack seal and start looking at doing the microsurfacing, but that's kind of why I was hoping to expedite and push faster on the residentials than before, because we were going to do one per year over six years, and right now, hopefully by the end of next fiscal year, we have all those residentials done.
That's really great. I assume you're going to decide which of those streets, if there is money, extra money to go back and do that, will be based on traffic counts and the existing road, you know, which ones need it the most?
Yeah, so we, the traffic counts don't come in the program. There is an opportunity to weigh those in, but unless you have traffic counts on all the roads, which we don't, and not only every road, keep in mind, say Stockton Hill, I can't do five miles of Stockton Hill in one project, so it's broken in maintenance sections. Out of the, out of the 235 lane miles, or I'm sorry, centerline miles of roadway we have in Kingman, I have 800 maintenance districts, or maintenance sections, rather, not district, maintenance section, and that way we can break those into section. And also, you know, not every section of road is the same age or state and condition, so we rate each one of those at a project level before we pull a project. So the program, we could look back, we can go in and we can run those scenarios and look, and it will make recommendations to us. It's a recommendation, again, we'll go out and put boots on the ground and make sure that that treatment fits, but, you know, the, I guess I haven't gotten that deep into the evaluation, but that would be kind of an overview or a basics way that we would get to a project level on what roads would be treated.
Okay. Thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jack? I had a question on the outstanding water patches. Do we still have contractors out in the field doing those?
I do not. I used up all the funds, and I apologize, I meant to mention that. We have a contract that we will be bringing to you guys. They can actually start as soon as that's approved, and so they will stay until that contract is done. We did put a little bit of extra in there because we know between now and the time that it's approved and they're working, that we'll have some more leaks, and so this contract should bring us up to date to that point, and so we will have that on the August 2 agenda. I'll be loading that tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. That was my question. Any others? Okay, thank you so much, Jack.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving on to announcements by Mayor, Council members, and City Manager. We'll start with you, Manager Walsh.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Nothing to report.
All right, Counsel Savage?
Nothing to report.
Counsel Ward? Counsel Staley? Counsel Eric?
No, I'll go on the next part.
And it looks like we lost the mayor. I have nothing to report. Counsel requests for future reports and updates? Counsel Savage?
Yes, please.
All right. And this is for Manager Walsh. I know that previously on Andy Devine and Beal, we had veterans posters for newly enrolled members, and I got a concern from a constituent that the flags or banners for the active military that are on the light poles are having issues with the city and is not laying on, laying on, pull them on theirs and telling them they must remove them all or off of Beal Street. Can you just check into that for me, please?
Vice Mayor, if I may, I can actually give you a response now. We've been working with the group that has all of those banners, and we worked with Ms. Hammond Tree. She's been the lead person on those military banners, and we've worked with her, and actually we've provided locations and assisting her in putting those back up. There were a number of them that were on Beal Street that were taken down due to the improvements, and what we've, what we've tried to do now is, in order to have more impact and have more of a statement with those military banners, we've tried to concentrate them along Andy Devine. So all of the poles along Andy Devine, and we worked with Ms. Hammond Tree to come up with this as well, but all of the poles along Andy Devine will have these banners, and then that way, as we're driving down Andy Devine, you'll have that location. The banners along Beal Street, what we were hoping to do with those light poles is be able to reserve those for more seasonal-type banners, you know, for 4th of July, have the flags up. If we're having a parade, include it that way. So that's the direction that we've gone. Obviously, if council would like us to go a different direction, we'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ward? Counsel Staley? Counsel Eric?
Yes. I've got this written down, so one sec. All right. So I was privileged to do a midnight ride-along with Officer Zach, and to say it was eye-opening is an understatement. I got to meet other officers and the volunteers our officers depend on, and I got to see the methodology and process involved with routine stops and even a DUI. Being a curious human, it sparked many questions for our police department. Chief Cooper, pardon me to burden you with some homework, but I'd like a report on a couple of issues. One is patrol and management. What would it take for KPD to patrol and manage the airport in Rancho Santa Fe Parkway once it's built? Is this something that we should start preparing for now? Question two, radio system evaluation. Our radios have poor reception in critical areas like Walmart, the hospital, the jail, Rancho Santa Fe, and even around the police department. They're part of a system involving telephone cables and transmission towers. I would like to know if there's a better solution available, possibly using a new fiber running through town. The current system is almost 50 years old and only allows one person to speak at a time, causing issues during multiple interactions. Could we look into some way of improving our radio systems? And three, the mental health crisis response. Mental health issues are becoming more common, and current situations, current services like Mojave Mental Health and Southwest Behavior aren't necessarily sufficient. I wanted to know, how does your team handle mental health calls? I'd like an outline of what happens when someone calls 911 with a psychotic event and what actions are taken. Could we create a specialized team within one of the departments, whether it's police or fire, to handle these calls? And those are my three questions. Get all those?
All right. Thank you, Counsel Eric. I just wanted to, for the record, I know that we had requested a call to the public updates, and I'm being told that those are going to come starting next meeting. So call to the public updates on people that attend and have a call to the public will be updated by Manager Walsh starting next meeting. All right. Anybody else? Okay, with that, we're adjourned.